We're going to wait another minute or so because I see there's a lot of people actively joining right now. We usually stabilize a few minutes in. And then we'll, we'll go ahead and get started. Pardon us for the fact that I'm looking back and forth. My, my notes are in a different place than my camera. So very aware that uh I'm bouncing around a bit. But that is to give you my full attention. I hope you're all here today for our health-related social needs partner work session. This is, we've had now quite a few of these. We started in August. And we're following a somewhat linear path where we grab some of what we're doing. As we build health-related social need services through the 1115 Medicaid waiver here in Oregon. We're continuing to, to build and consider and think through different parts of the structures that we're building. And I'm really excited to have this small piece of time where we get to bring the latest and greatest to you all. And really have a conversation about what this work might look like. How you see yourself or your organization or the people you serve in this work. Places where you may have concerns or additional questions. And then uh on our side or on my side, I suppose. Uh, I consider it sort of a negotiation with the internal structures and you all to see what do we know? What can we bring back? How can we be responsive to your questions and your comments? Knowing that there's no possible way for us to talk about all of it in any, even with the two hours we have right now. So we're going to take this piece by piece. And today's piece um is really going to be focusing in on a part of the health-related social needs benefits. We haven't talked much about which we're calling outreach and engagement. I realize I was so excited about what we're talking about that I didn't go through all of the housekeeping at the top. So I'm going to return to that. We have quite a few people on the line, so uh we're asking that if we, if anyone who isn't speaking can keep muted, you're always welcome to use the chat if you want to us to have information. Uh, we will, I think this one, we're going to be a little more interactive back and forth as we go versus saving questions for the end. Uh, so if there's a point at which you want to ask a question, feel free to put it in the chat. You can also raise your hand uh just to make it a productive space for us all. Um, and so we don't talk over each other. We are recording today and we have recorded all except the very first hour sessions. So we'll make sure that this recording gets to you as well as all of the materials from our past sessions um after the fact. We do also have live captioning. So if you are looking for English live captioning, there is a captions button, a CC button built into Zoom. We also have Spanish captioning. Um, and because I can only set one captioner at a time in Zoom, or at least with my current understanding. Uh, there is Spanish captioning, but you have to go to a third-party URL and it's the streamtext.net URL that we have in the chat. We also have live interpretation in Spanish, which is actually a good reminder for me to talk a little more slowly so that people can interpret what I'm saying into Spanish. Uh, I ask for all of us to right now, click on that globe or the, the circle that you see in Zoom and pick either English or Spanish as a channel. And that way we do have people who are able to interpret if someone asks a question in Spanish into English and vice versa. This presentation today will be in English. So those are my housekeeping bits for today. And if anyone has any questions or any, uh, if you're having any tech issues, please feel free to use the chat. We have some folks who have graciously agreed to help me manage the chat since there's enough of us that I can't do it on my own. Uh, and we'll work uh in the background to see if there's anything we can do to help you have success in participating today. All right, housekeeping done. Uh, here's what we're going to talk about today. We always set the stage with a basic overview of the 1115 waiver. That's because we know that there are folks who this might be the first time you're attending one of these sessions. We want to make sure that we are all on the same page. So if you've been here the whole time and you know this information as well or well better than I do, feel free to grab a cup of coffee for the first little bit or a glass of water or a snack. Uh, but we are committed to making sure we start on the same page, which is why uh, I, I am committed to this slightly redundant piece of information that we always share. And if you're new, then absolutely welcome. And if there are any things that you have questions about as we set the stage, that's also really great feedback to get. Once we get through section one, we will talk more about the health-related social needs outreach and engagement services. Talking mostly about the outreach and engagement services that we plan to have go live January 1, 2024 alongside the climate services. I'm sure that we'll also be bringing more information on these and a host of other things that are currently written into our services protocol at a later date, but consider this sort of that teaser in that first bit of information. And we have a lot of questions for you because ultimately in order to add these services into our waiver work, we need it to be something that you all feel comfortable um providing. And we need, we need to make sure that we're building it in a way where um you find value and the people you serve find value. We're going to end with our usual Q and A. Um, talk a little bit about what we have planned for future sessions. And also open up the floor to have a bit wider of a discussion, which might be me collecting things so that I can learn more about them and bring them back. Or we also have a few um excellent subject matter experts on the line who may be able to chime in. And I jump right in. My name is Jessica Diaz. I usually her pronouns and I'm a community engagement manager working for the Oregon Health Authority. Um, and thank you all so much for joining us today. All right, here's the background information. You he, you will hear us talk about the waiver as if it is the only waiver that we are doing. And that's just because it's the one that's forefront in my mind. It's the work that I'm doing day to day. But when we're talking about the idea of a Medicaid waiver, that is a broader item that we've actually been working on in a few different ways for many, many years. And it is a partnership with the federal government. So when we talk about Medicaid, there is a standard set of rules that is a national standard that all of the state programs have to adhere to. But we also have some flexibility built into this system. And one of those mechanisms is our, our waiver, which is essentially us as a state, asking the federal government for permission to try new things. And this can be both to see if there are better ways, different ways to be doing the business of oh, it's not business to, to operationalize Medicaid here in Oregon. Uh, maybe some things that we learn in Oregon can be useful to other states who are trying to think of other new ways to help serve the people in their state. Maybe there are things that are specific to Oregon that we need a little bit of flexibility to really do right here. And this waiver is a way to try out these different ways of, of running Medicaid. And we renew these waivers every five years. We have to go through a process where the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services accepts or rejects or negotiates the proposals. And so we're in one of those five-year processes right now. We've had 1115 waivers since 1994. It's how we do a lot of our work. A lot of our work started as a waiver idea and is now business as usual. This particular five-year process of the waiver was approved starting October 1st of 2022. And it goes through the end of September 2027. And it really is a building and back and forth process. There are even some parts of the waiver that are still pending negotiation. We're going to talk up about the things that are not in that pending negotiation part of the work. But just know that this is not a comprehensive list of everything going on in the waiver, but a place for us to have some shared definitions so we can start. I feel like if there's one slide to return to again and again, it's really making sure as we move forward that we are thinking about our shared goals in all of these different moving pieces. And ultimately that is to intentionally address and advance health equity in Medicaid systems here in Oregon. Want to make sure our healthcare system is moving in the direction of becoming more and more equitable culturally and linguistically responsive. We want to find ways that people can maintain their health coverage. And we want to improve health outcomes by doing things that are not only the kind of health work that happens in doctors' offices and clinics and hospitals, but really looks at those health-related social needs outside of medical care. And as we do all of this, we want to make sure that we're ensuring smart and flexible spending. I will always call out the fact that we are including healthier Oregon OHP members in our work on the 1115 waiver. Healthier Oregon OHP members are ones who do not have a um wow, my brain just broke halfway through my sentence. When we say healthier Oregon, we mean OHP members who may not have an uh immigration status that is traditionally considered uh eligible for full Medicaid benefits, but we have expanded that here in the state of Oregon. And we're committed to that being true of the waiver as well as our other work in OHP. Now's also a great time to call out that we have tried very hard to put our acronyms at the very bottom so that every slide has as many of the acronyms explained as possible. We may miss a few, but we're continuing to build those in as well. So I hope you find that useful. Now, some of the changes we've talked about and some that we will continue to talk about are ways in which we are extending our Oregon Health Plan Eligibility for Young Children, Youth and Adults. Something we're not going to talk about in detail here, but is really cool and is currently active is continuous OHP eligibility and enrollment for children up to age six, as well as two years of continuous enrollment for members who are six and older. We also, and this is still a work that's very much in process, but we are working on extending and expanding coverage for young adults with special healthcare needs up to the age of 26 as well. And then what we will spend a lot of time talking about today are the health-related social needs. HRSN, you will hear this or see this acronym quite a bit in our work. Making sure those supports that include housing, nutrition and climate are built into OHP. Now, when we're talking health-related social needs, we're really talking about the different needs that people have that may be social, economic, that impact their ability to maintain their health and wellbeing. And there's two different ways of thinking about health-related social needs. There's the big picture, absolutely anything that can affect your health and wellbeing. And then there's the specific ways in which we have worked with the federal government to build out OHP. And so you'll hear us refer to HRSN services as housing, nutrition, climate, and then outreach and engagement. Just know that when we say that, we're not saying these are the only needs that people have. These are just the ones that we got the go-ahead to really dive into and to build structures around within this waiver. And I pause for a second and give a call out that if you, if you were tuning out a little bit because you've heard me say this many times, now is the time to come back because now is the new content that I haven't shared before. We're going to talk about outreach and engagement as it is built into our health-related social needs services work here for the Medicaid 1115 waiver. And I say it that way because I know that there's no shortage of outreach and engagement activities that you all are doing that we're attempting at the state. Heck, this is one of those. We're trying to do outreach and engagement with you right now. But in this context, we're going to really be talking about the things that we're building into our, our funding structures, building into Medicaid very intentionally. Because we love a good acronym, you will see that we have called outreach and engagement O and E in some places. I'm going to try my hardest not to, not to lean into the acronyms, but you, I may find myself doing that. So when we talk about outreach and engagement, what we're talking about today are a series of health-related social needs services that are built into our 1115 waiver here in Oregon for this round of the waiver. Uh, when we are talking about outreach and engagement, we're really thinking about how we are, I would say it's sort of the glue between the other health-related social need services that we're trying to stand up. We know that it's one thing to offer housing supports, climate supports, nutrition supports. But if we don't also include the supports needed to connect the dots and to help people identify the aspects of their social needs that might be a covered service within health-related social needs as a Medicaid benefit. We're going to have limited utility to that if we don't also have a way to reimburse for those activities that are required to make them successful. And so you'll see here identifying people who may be eligible for health-related social needs services, helping them understand what the process looks like and how to navigate the process to access these services and making sure that we're doing so in a culturally specific and responsive manner. And a really big part of this also is making sure that this is a good fit for them, which is we need to give individuals the opportunity to choose whether they would like to access these additional health-related social needs benefits and really help them figure out how to do that in a way that works for them as well as works within our systems. And here are some of those um outreach and engagement activities that are part of the HRSN service benefit. First off, attempting to locate, contact and help people who may be eligible for these health-related social needs services. Working with them to collect information necessary to access. Access and assess, both are true. I'm realizing I think this is correctly saying assessing. We're assessing what their needs are so that they can then access the needs. Sorry. My brain just tried to make that a different word. Determining, this is a big one that I am really excited to talk to you all about in more detail, which is determining whether someone is on open card or they're part of the fee-for-service program for OHP or if they're on a coordinated care organization. And if they are on a CCO, which CCO they're on so that we can help connect the dots and connect that individual to the right folks inside our systems to do that further assessment and eligibility work and to help connect those dots further. And one way in which we can help connect these dots is by helping people get some or maybe even all of the health-related social needs screening pieces of information to the CCOs or to the fee-for-service program to make sure that we are correctly determining eligibility and do authorize those services. And this is a part where building in ways that we can help connect the dots within the structures that Medicaid makes us build. And then there's also aspects that aren't tied directly to the health-related social needs services, like helping people access other medical, social, educational, legal, the other services that exist that may not be Medicaid or OHP services. We know that there are things that OHP is going to do well and there are things where we might not have a full, long-term solution for people. And so we have to work within the patchwork of social supports that exists in the state and to grow those out together. And so that's part of the outreach and engagement activities that's in scope as well. Here's the part where I hope to do less talking and more listening. So we talked, I talked through some of those different parts of what is considered outreach and engagement within the waiver. And I'm hoping to pause for a little bit on five of these and to hear from you what your current role or your organization's current role is in doing this work. If there are ways in which we at the state can support you. If there are aspects of this that is working really well with the people that you serve. And if there are aspects of this that are, there are barriers when you're trying to help people connect to services. Whether it's, I mean, our HRSN services are not yet live, so I know that that's not the question. So let's think about the larger social network of services and supports for people beyond medical care. Um, and if there's anything else that you want us to be thinking about as we work to flesh out what this will look like uh beyond the sentences that you're seeing here on the screen. So one of five, attempting to locate, contact and help individuals who may be eligible for health-related social needs services. I'm going to pause, take a sip of water and um I see a hand already. So Yoni, go ahead.
Hi Jessica, uh, thank you to the OHA team for making um this forum available to just talk through some of this. I work for Northwest Pilot Project and we do housing stabilization and homeless services for the 55 and over community, so tends to be seniors. We're really interested as an agency in being a part of the HRSN benefit and want to step up and are willing to adjust the way we do things in order to make sure this works because we see the real promise and the value and um the beauty of this benefit package that the state did such an amazing job um negotiating with CMS. Um, I think one issue that has come to the forefront with our agency is, you know, we have folks coming in constantly to our office. And you know, as far as Medicaid eligibility goes, we've basically broken down, there's three buckets that they could fall into. They could be eligible for, they're all low-income, so they could be eligible for OHP but not enrolled. They could be assigned to a CCO or fee-for-service, but they don't know how to access. And the third one is they're Medicare Medicaid duels in the senior population. So specifically Medicare is their primary, OHP is their secondary. And you know, our goal is that we want to work with, we want to work with partners, CCOs, CBOs, OHA to make sure that folks are being connected to this. Without knowing the specific status of the healthcare assignment, it gets very tricky to figure out who our agency needs to contact in order to connect them to HRSN or any other part of the OHP benefit and simply having the ability to determine, number one, is someone actually enrolled right now in OHP or do they need to be enrolled? And then secondarily, um, allowing the CBOs to access information on what managed care entity we should contact in order to start the process of either referral or just talk about general healthcare needs. I'm sorry to talk so much, but I will add this one point, um, which is that, you know, we work with folks from the position of being on the street to housing them. And that is a multi-year-long process and relationship. So by default, we're often the folks who get the phone call when somebody's experiencing a mental health issue, inability to access their medication, inability to deal with a physical health or behavioral health issue. And we don't always, we harbor that information. We don't always know where to take it. So as we're kind of thinking through how folks want to access this and how we want to reach out to folks, just I being able to identify from a CBO perspective, whether someone's insured and who we need to contact in order to create that link would be super beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Yoni. And I am realizing I should go straight to number three because I do think that this is more focused. And I think that question number one was a larger, broader version of this question. So I'm wondering if you all would humor me and talk through this one first. Sorry to change, change lanes midway through a conversation here, but I think, you know, what you bring up is very important. And it's, it's this part right here is starting part of what you just said, which is um and instead of me talking about the little bits of knowledge I have about how this is currently happening for some folks or not for others. I'd really love to hear from you all about how you or your organization currently do or struggle with this activity so that we can build together uh versus me telling you what I think is the case. And so I know there's a lot of really great information people are already putting in the chat. I know I saw some hands that maybe went away because I changed uh what we're talking about at the moment, but um Sherilyn, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to be called right away. So I thought I saw somebody else's hand, but that was probably for the first slide you had up. Okay, um, I want to be the first to say we don't currently ask questions about whether they're insurance or not. On our, our primarily service, uh, our primary service now is no cost, no questions asked, but we are looking to expand. And one way to do that is to bring in stable funding um and revenue. And so I've been attending these meetings because we are interested in adding to our services a way to be on a referral network. And I have seen a demo, product demo by Connect Oregon. And I'm really happy with it. However, it is the only type of, you know, referral network that I have seen so far, so I am biased. But you know, I really like how efficient it looked. I don't, it sounds to me like the software was built for them. You know, at first I thought it was a Salesforce product, but yeah, uh, we don't currently do that. To answer your questions, is this something we already do or how can you support us with this activity? I think for us, just knowing how we can get access to funding that will allow us to build capacity, right? Um, but we are nutrition and I understand that as it stands, the nutrition is not, funding will not be available until 2025. And so I would like to know with some information about how can we have access to funding now to be able to um offer to uh what we provide to individuals that are, are enrolled in what you have here, part of a CCO. Maybe they're on OHP or they're eligible, but they don't know they are. How can we get them on there? And get them on a some sort of referral network, basically have the time and resource and the ability to build up our capacity.
Thank you. And I think I didn't include a timeline in my intro blurb today. I feel like I've been meaning to add that in. It's, I think it's in the appendix. So we do have it here in the slide deck. I'm going to go to it very quickly because I do want to make sure we're on the same page here. Which is um, we are talking about different implementation timelines for different parts of the health-related social needs services. And you'll see here that in 2024, we start with the climate benefit going live in January. Housing services begin to phase in in November of next year. Nutrition benefit goes live in 2025. And something that's not on here, but that we'll be discussing next time. So this is a teaser because I don't have the content in front of me and I don't want to wing it. But I do know that we'll be spending the whole time talking about the community capacity building funds in more detail and really setting the stage there for what to expect from that timeline. Because I think there is a difference between, let me see if I have a slide for this. I don't, I'm continuing to see what we need to build out so that we can um share what we know with you. There's a difference between the funds that are part of the community capacity building startup funds that are going to become available to people and the funds that actually fund the services themselves. So I think those are two different but interconnected conversations to have. And I am really excited in early November to start talking about the community capacity building funds part of that. And I think we're probably overdue to start talking more money on the side of what it might look like as these services go live and as people are providing those services in community. Which was my way of saying that I don't have answers today, but I look forward to continuing to bring that content here. I do see there's a lot of, and my apologies for, I did definitely prioritize hands over chat because it was front and center in my vision. I do see a lot of folks talking about the work that they do currently for the people who are able to determine if someone is enrolled and where they are enrolled. So I'm wondering if anyone either who put something in the chat or maybe who hasn't, but would like to talk about um how you are currently doing this, if it is part of your work. So how are you currently determining if someone is enrolled in OHP and if they are on open card or if they're in a specific CCO? Because I know that there are some folks who have current processes set up and I'd love to hear more about that. Do I have any hands or should I start reading off the chat? Janine, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to start talking with, and you're like, do I have any hands? So I decided to put it up.
Oh, you're so polite. Thank you.
Um, so um, I'm with Valley Family. I'm a, I'm health clinic in rural Oregon. Um, so what we have is um, for all of our sisters, we have access to MMIS. So we're able to look that way. Um, but then our patient service representatives, which is our front desk, they also have the benefit tracker. And so they're able to get more specific information um to make sure and verify that they are on the CCO or if they are open card. to make sure and verify that they are on the CCO or if they are open card. And then it also gives us their primary care providers as well to make sure that we're like set as their primary care provider so that we're able to bill and get paid for those services.
Thank you so much. And I think we do also have a really good mix of folks in this room who are already Medicaid providers and have access to MMIS and to tools that help them determine if someone is on OHP and also directly bill for services. And then there are quite a few people here in this chat and in this meeting who, who do not have those tools. I'm wondering if I, let's see. I think I saw there were some folks who are not directly providers, but who are now using MMIS. And I'm wondering if you can, if someone's willing to talk out loud about that process as well. I think Panaal might be one of those. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, you are correct. Hi, my name is Omar and thank you for providing this space. We provide donated care, so we screen clients if they are enrolled in Oregon Health Plan prior to engage them with that program. Also, one of our programs supports with insurance enrollment. I'm not sure if through MMIS, we can go to the level of details of which CCO and what other pieces of information that was shared through the benefit tracker. I'm not sure about that piece of information, but we do have access to MMIS and that's how we use it.
Thank you so much. And, oh, it's an acronym that I think it means Medicaid Management Information System, MMIS. And it looks like, at least for the views that some people are using it for, they do see CCO enrollment. I see that in the chat. Thank you. And I will say one thing for MMIS, which is in the end, people may have notices, they may have something that's showing in the Oregon Eligibility Online System, the ONE system. But what really matters for most OHP benefits is if they go to see a provider, will that provider see in their system that person showing up and having active benefits? So you will hear us talk about MMIS as sort of that ultimate place where you can see how people are reflected in our systems. But I also know that CCOs use different systems within their networks. And I think I, I heard something about a benefit manager or benefit tool that people are using outside of MMIS. I know just enough to be dangerous here on, on how some of these things work. Ashley.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. My name's Ashley. I am on the waiver engagement team and I'm just wanting to chime in because one of our subject matter experts, Jesse Wilson, is on the line. And I'm curious, Jesse, if you have any input around the MMIS or if anything has been discussed yet about whether HRSN providers would be granted access to that simply by being an HRSN service provider and potentially referring? Or if there's any info you can give around that. Sorry to put you on the spot too.
Hey, Ashley. Hi, everyone. Jesse Wilson, she/her pronouns, waiver operations. So in terms of MMIS, we are still developing a finalizing provider qualifications, HRSN provider qualifications. But what we are leaning towards is, is not requiring providers to go through the traditional enrollment process that it would require to become enrolled in MMIS and be a Medicaid provider. Really, that, that's limited to entities that are doing the direct billing for this. And then I, I don't know if my colleague, Mary Durant's on, she could also weigh in too if she's on. But we're looking at a registration process for providers that would be less burdensome than the traditional MMIS enrollment process. Still finalizing that requirement though. So absolutely happy to hear feedback on, on concerns and barriers or how, how this is already working for folks. Also, I do want to highlight that for the climate benefit, that is going live in January, January of 2024. So in terms of outreach and engagement, we'll be looking at a more limited set of activities that would be appropriate for that service and then expanding to a larger list of activities of outreach and engagement for the nutrition and housing benefits. So more to come on that. And I see Mary is on. So Mary, what, what can you clarify that I glossed over?
So you were absolutely right. We are looking at a way to have, we, we call it a bunch of different things, but we have an abbreviated enrollment process that we do for rendering providers who are doing services, but who were not paying directly. So we're looking into how we could leverage that process. There are still a set of minimum requirements because of course, anytime we give access to protected health information, there's some things that we have to do under HIPAA privacy and other things. But the only way we can share MMIS access is to providers who we know. So that the provider has to be in some way registered slash enrolled. Enrolled can be a triggering word. So I don't like to say enrolled, but I say registered, which refers to that limited, more abbreviated process. But once we have those providers in place, then we have the option of looking at sharing limited MMIS access, which is what the folks who are using it have now, which would be looking at whether someone is eligible and looking at whether they're in a CCO. It does not provide anything for the future. It's only passed up to today. And then it would direct you to any CCO that they might have. Now, there is a limitation with that because it doesn't go as far as who their primary care provider is. We don't even know that when someone's in a CCO. So we can't share that. But there may be some options. If you get into some of the CCOs, they have systems each as well that are eligibility and enrollment systems where they might be able to share that. So there's a few options we can look into once we decide how we're going to handle the different provider levels.
Thank you. And I do, I wish there was a member of our Oregon Health Authority Community Partner Outreach Program team on the line so that I could bother them. Boy, Ashley just brought Jesse on screen. Because I know I was on that team and right as I was transitioning here, we were setting up that very basic MMIS access for people who are not traditional Medicaid providers that only had those eligibility and enrollment pieces of information, not all the other millions of things. I only kind of understand about how MMIS is a billing portal. So I do know that there is at least one model of the work that we could potentially expand beyond the folks who bill Medicaid for services currently, but also that in order to make something for HRSN, that might be a new kind of provider compared to the, the types who are currently in the system. But I am seeing multiple people put in the chat that they would be interested in pursuing this if we're able to build it. And then maybe I'll move on to another one of our, our deep dives. Unless, oh, Mary's your, I looked away and looked back and I don't know if this is a hand that is still up or you have a new hand up.
Still up. Sorry. I'll go take it down.
I do that all the time. All right. I am going to move us back to one of five, now that I went rogue and pushed us ahead to three. Because I do think that finding people's eligibility status, well, not eligibility, enrollment status in OHP is a really important part of this. But I'm wondering if folks want to talk more about other aspects of finding people, talking to them and helping them when it comes to services that are not medical services that people need while they're also on OHP. So I'm going to pause and see if there's anything for question one, now that I, you might've been primed to talk about before, and then I rudely moved us and I've moved us back. I'm also trying to look through the chat. People are active enough that I have to scroll a bit, but that's a great problem to have. And I imagine that there are ways in which you all have found success and barriers in finding people, reconnecting with people, once you have had that initial conversation with them about their needs. Oh yeah, I'm happy to repeat the question, which is when we're talking about locating, contacting and providing help to people who may be eligible for services. And it says HRSN here, but I'm going to broaden it a little bit. So where do you find barriers and successes in really continuing to stay in contact with people and helping them navigate through any of the health or social services systems? Misha.
Hello. Yeah. So one of the things that we have begun doing is offering support accommodations for people involved in the criminal justice system. And we would like to, as we expand this, the project and the program services to be able to support people who are transitioning out of incarceration-type settings. And, and one of the things we know just from the stats is that, that are many people with developmental disabilities incarcerated. And, and yet they often don't get the right accommodations, accommodations from people who know how to work with those with developmental disabilities. And we would like to have, have better connections with and to be able to to, to assist those who are in that transition process. So helping us make those connections and, and find those folks that we can support in those ways would be fantastic.
Thank you so much. And I have to say, when it comes to finding people who may be eligible for these services as we roll them out, I don't think there's any way that we at the state can have success with this if we don't have connections and relationships with people like you all who are in community every day, who are helping people directly and, and are able to also spread the word beyond the folks who are best positioned to hear from the state about services. So I'm also very interested in any successes or barriers you all see when it comes to that. Ooh, there's a lot of hands up. Uh, Janine, I think your hand was up first.
Thanks. Um, yeah, so we actually are connected to our local farm workers association. And so what we do is we offer, we have a mobile access clinic that we call the MAC. And so we've picked that out and we're able to do like vaccines. We make sure that there's a community health worker involved with that to address any barriers to care or social barriers. And then we also make sure that we are involved in all of our, you know, small community events. So within our little Treasure Valley of clinics, we have sixteen locations. And so we're able to make sure that we're meeting those needs of our specific communities. So if that's from going to health fairs or going and doing a trick or treat, which we're planning on doing this year, we've done it previously in the past. We just make sure that everybody, like, we're, we're always on the mind, you know, Valley Family offers X, Y, and Z. They can help X, Y, and Z. We also, you know, just make sure that we're connecting with our patients that are in clinic because it's so hard to get them to come back when they're here for urgent needs and stuff like that. So that's the way that we're addressing it. And we also get lists for individuals who are on CCOs or open card that need to establish care with providers. So we're able to make those outreach calls as well to see if they want to establish care.
Thank you. Oh, there's so many important pieces that you just shared. You know, I think instead of me trying to talk more about that, you, you worded that really well in it. We have collected it. Well, we're recording, so if we haven't written it down, we will write it down. I think those are really, those relationships, the fact that there are lists that go from CCOs, things like that, really important context in this work. Thank you. Uh, oh, there's a lot of, oh, go ahead.
Um, our population health team actually works with all of the insurances. So it's not technically just EOCCOs, I mean, CCO, sorry. It can actually be private insurance employer-based insurances. And we're reaching out to those individuals as well, just to make sure that they're not falling off the radar.
Thank you. I'm realizing there's a lot more hands. I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak. Tabitha, you're up next.
Hey there. My name is Tabitha Jensen. I use she/her and they/them pronouns. And I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff for the Chair in Moonee County, Chair Vega Peterson. And first, I don't know if we've gotten the question answered yet relative to this pilot, if county entities could actually play a role in HRSN work. And part of why I think that's such an important question is because often there are already pre-established networks of care for things like rental assistance, for example, in our DCHS programming. Where it seems like in some cases, we wouldn't necessarily need to recreate the wheel and could even look to expand some of our networks with perhaps culturally specific providers that aren't currently a part of our networks. But I think more broadly, just a comment I would make from having done a lot of work in different arenas, youth and family services and, and housing and houselessness. I do feel like sometimes when we work on pilots like this, we often forget that there are lessons we can learn from past launches. I mean, even just thinking back to the Measure 110 complicated rollout. And I know one of the big lessons that I took away from that was there was no establishment of a lead entity for the state. And so regions were all kind of just fumbling around. And I feel like we're still kind of digging out from that when if there had been the establishment of a core lead entity or even hiring an administrative services organization, there are organizations throughout the country that do that type of work that provide technical assistance and have a single CRM system for collecting data that are able to verify and make sure that there isn't duplication of services because they have everyone report up into one repository. It just feels like if there isn't some form of centralization, this is going to get very messy. So so yeah, I guess still have that question about whether or not county systems can be a part of the HRSN network throughout the state. But then also just making sure that we don't recreate some of the messes that we've seen elsewhere.
I was about to ask who I should, who I can lean on from a subject matter expertise point of view. And I see Jesse that you have your hand up. So is that in response to this question?
Thanks, Jessica. And thank you, Tabitha. I think I just wanted to follow up with additional clarity on that. So we're looking at for the, for HRSN service providers who are serving fee-for-service or open card members using a third-party administrator for several functions. And then the CCOs would serve in that capacity for providers that they're contracted, that are in their contracted network. So can you talk a little bit more, I think, about the administrative service organization ASO? And how that would play into? I just want to understand how that's different name function.
Yeah. I mean, even just as I'm seeing in some of the comments, like there's different fragmented pieces that I think folks think of, like even just with reporting platforms. I know Unite Us, when I previously worked at New Avenues for Youth, they really lobbied for us to join their network. And part of why it just wasn't feasible for us was because A, we weren't funded. There wasn't a guarantee that it would continue to be free for us. And there wasn't a specific funder that was requiring our use of it, which it sucks that that's part of motivation, but to have staff make entry into an entirely separate system from the CRM we were using was really complicated. But if you think about like, for example, Unite Us, that's just a data platform. If you have an ASO or sometimes it's a lead entity, in some states, it's been like a larger nonprofit that has a really robust administrative backbone. And And, um, like Ocean, for example, could sometimes play a role like that theoretically, if they had a business wing that did that type of work. They would be responsible for all of the, like, for example, issuance of the rent checks from a centralized place so that we weren't dealing with literally like 60 different small organizations that have different models that could end up potentially like what say of one of the nonprofits is like ones that I've worked for in the past where they're having cash flow issues and a check doesn't get issued quickly. Where there's more control over things happening from a singular central place. Um, also kind of managing customer service and care coordination. It, it does create a more widgetized system, which you have to be very careful about to make sure that you're still keeping person centeredness and, and equity considerations in mind. But sometimes having it managed by, um, almost kind of more of a business system can lead to better outcomes because you're not dealing with just a bunch of random people trying to figure something out. They're instead focused on the human element and, and providing the service to the, the folks on the frontline.
Can I respond to that, Jessica, from a CBO perspective?
Uh, yes.
Um, I hear, I agree that there is a need. However, a lot of times us CBOs get lost in that exact administrative that you just addressed. Um, platforms are built. There's a couple that are out. I'm not going to say names. There are a couple that are out. And it starts turning into, we just need to get this information entered and we lose the human side of it. And then that tends to get frustrating because then we're bogged down with data entry more than we are with the actual direct service. And though I know that it's important for all of us to work together, I always get a little anxious when I hear things like, well, maybe the county could this, or maybe the county could do that because a lot of us work with the county and we already have challenges with them as it is. So however this plays out, I just don't want CBOs, especially us smaller ones. I don't want our voices to get lost in the overpowering of the higher powers who have more power in making decisions and saying, um, that we need to have this and we need to have that, but we're not asking for CBOs and what they're thinking and what works best for us.
Thank you so much. And I think all of these things exist simultaneously. So I, I think um, I really do want to hold this space open to, to consider many of these different angles. Um, not going to make any promises about what will ultimately be built within the structures we have to work within. But I think I, I am really committed to making sure that we are documenting and considering and getting you good answers for why we go in the directions we ultimately go and that we're not doing it in a vacuum. And I am wondering, one small, specific part of the conversation right now, Jessie, do we have any guidance on whether and how counties can be part of this structure? Um, or is that something that's still under consideration? Cause I know it's not the first time this has come up.
Yeah, I think just my immediate reaction is, um, as we're developing the provider qualifications, the H R S N provider qualifications, I think that's very broad. And I don't see if those requirements are met, why, why they wouldn't be able to, um, does that answer the question?
I'm sure not with the specificity that counties would like, but it'll get us there. It'll get us closer. Um, absolutely.
Yeah. And maybe let me put it this other way. I think if, if it's an access point or or an entity that is actually providing those services already. And again, if they, as long as they meet their, their requirements that we're, um, drafting, I would say yes.
Thank you. And I'm realizing there are some folks who have had their hands up for a long time and are being very patient. Uh, so I'm going to move us along, not because we've completely handled that part of the conversation, but I want to make sure we're, we're continuing to hold open space and please feel free to use the chat. Also to let me know if I'm missing the boat on some of what I'm hearing or you want to circle back. But Sherilyn, uh, you're up next.
There we go. Thank you, Jessica. Um, I just want to echo what Christine Sanders said, um, about her concerns, you know, not having what she said. She said it eloquently and much clearer than I would. Um, to address this slide, um, so for us, uh, for those that are not familiar with our service, we actually do meal delivery to people's homes. Um, and so through that, um, I'm thinking that one way you can support us is to have flyers that are printed, but also digital printed because we know that through self-identification of the uh, individuals and families who signed up for our meal service, um, we've learned that they have disabilities. Some of them are deaf, some of them are blind. Um, we've also learned that they don't always have access to internet or technology. They don't have a smartphone. They don't have a computer. Some of them are, are at risk of houselessness. And so they go to community centers, um, and you know, social service, uh, spaces that have, uh, computer and access to internet, um, in order to sign up for services, right? Um, I think it's a good idea to have printed flyers because of that. Um, and then also make it bigger in print. Um, we have a lot of folks that are, uh, over 55 and up. And so we found that when we went to our resource fair where we produce flyers with large size fonts, very simple information. I can see it, um, I can see it being beneficial if O H A would consider producing flyers about in the, you know, hey, are you an individual who, um, you, you think you might be eligible for these and, you know, describing H R S N services? Um, and not complicated. Uh, I'm very challenged by a lot of county and state produced materials, including O H A. There are like eight point font size. Um, and you know, I look at my insurance card. Two weeks ago, I needed to call the doctor and make an appointment. And I'm wearing glasses and I still had a hard time reading everything on my insurance card. And so I sympathize and I think about the families and individuals that signed up for our meals. Um, I also think that, uh, digital flyers, marketing materials about this waiver and the health related services that will be available along with a timeline, um, would be beneficial to produce. Put it on the shared drive that can be accessible by CBOs, right? Like Christine said, and as well as other CBOs here. Um, we just, we just simply don't have a lot of resources to, you know, we don't have a design team. We don't have a marketing team. Oftentimes it's ourselves, executive directors doing that on top of everything else, direct service, admin, marketing. As far as how would we be able to, uh, locate and give it out to those folks? Like I mentioned, we can, uh, we can give it out during our meal deliveries. We also do pickups to 80 to 100 households per service week, and they're not always the same household. So we see new people. Um, we also go to events. I think I heard somebody say outreach. So we've now been going to a lot of in-person events. Currently we're in Maluma County, but we plan to go to Placamas and Washington County as well. And so having access to these marketing materials, hopefully provided by, um, O H A, um, I think would be very, very useful. And then of course, the last piece of, you know, how can you support us? Is going back to that, uh, Jessica, what you said about the capacity building, when, when those resources will be available. So we can do all these things that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, oh, there's so many aspects to that. I do see that there is a related question in the chat about how community-based organizations will be compensated for this service. And I'm going to start talking, but then I'm going to pause and see if the smart people who are more technical can help me. I think there are two aspects of this. Everything that I have laid out today under outreach and engagement services, there will be a mechanism with which to bill for doing these services. I am not in a place where I can, I understand or explain the intricacies of what's being built or how much is built. But there is part of this that is as you provide these services, getting reimbursed invoicing, something like that. Um, for these services. And then the community capacity building funds are sort of those grants for starting up the work that is different. And I know I, I feel like I'm being more cryptic than I mean to be. It's just because I lack the knowledge to be concise about it, but I, I want us to bring more details as we, as I can find them and dig them up for you all. Maybe I should put it that way. Um, and I want to pause and see if anyone internal to waiver work has a better answer than what I just gave because you likely do.
Jessica, do you want me to talk about billing mechanism?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. So at least for the first part of the waiver, um, H R S N service implementation for climate, the billing is going to be a manual process, um, eventually. And if Mary's still on, she can probably add some detail to this as well. Eventually the plan is to be able to use M M I S, but for the January launch for climate related services, so billing through providing, you know, the air conditioners, heaters, air filtration devices, those types of devices. That is going to be a manual billing process. So the member will receive the service from, uh, the H R S N provider. Um, the H R S N provider will collect the, the required supporting documentation, create the invoice to send to either the CCO, if they're part of that network, or they'll send it to the third party contractor or third party administrator. If it's, uh, for fee for service. Then that invoice will be, will be received and validated and there will be a payment. So it will be a manual process. Mary, anything that you want to add to that?
No, I think you said it perfectly.
So just to highlight, M M I S will not be used, uh, for, for the climate benefit. We're looking at leveraging that system later in the, in 2024.
And Tammy added something, a question that's related to it. Are we talking about billing for the actual item or I believe service or the time spent getting folks connected?
It could be both. So there are two ways, uh, if, if it's, um, outreach and engagement, that would be billing for that service. We're, we're creating a fee schedule that corresponds with a certain amount of time, um, you know, and a fee for that. Um, I think we're looking at 15 minute increments, but I can come back and certainly share more information on that. Um, if it's for a device, then it would be for the actual device. So both.
Yeah. And I think there will be specific rates and codes for the time spent. And I don't know when we will be able to do this, but I am realizing, I think it's a, not if, but when we bring folks who are more knowledgeable about um, rates, because I would love to run those by you all and to talk about that and whether you see this as as fitting into the work that you do or not. And I know that the person I was trying to bring in to help us with that is Andrea Diddy right now. So we did have a plan to try to have more of that expertise in the room. Uh, but some things you can't account for. So maybe, I hope next time.
Yeah. The plan I think is for next time to share that level of information. And I just, I'm seeing a question from, uh, Sherilyn, correct me if I didn't say your name correctly, please.
You said, you said it right.
There's a plan for piloting using fake information involving CCO, CBO, service providers, other agencies and testing the proposed implementation plan. Do you want to talk a little bit more about that? Are you, uh, you're talking about the billing process or each, uh, referrals? What it?
Yeah, I had a feeling you would ask me. Um, honestly, everything, everything you just said. And it's exactly, you know, because of what I said, right? Like, and maybe it's me because I'm new to this whole learning about insurance, the marketplace, CCO world, CBOs. I'm reading Tabitha Jensen's comment about usually an A S O or a lead entity, which can be a larger CBO would act as top of the chain for the funded providers in the project. And I feel like that's kind of related because you know, there's so many elements to this, right? And we're looking at a short timeline. Um, it's already mid-October or it's October 24 today. And if we're rolling this out for the climate initiative, that's not a lot of time between now and then. Um, so at Milcoor Kitchen, we do a lot of pilots. We play in a little sandbox before we implement, you know, adapt something into a full program. And we've learned so much through that. And we've all, it also helped us manage a lot of risks. Um, and the kind of like the golden learning there is we didn't lose trust of the people that really need our help, right? And so I look at this as this is wonderful, the 1115 waiver. There's so many elements that you guys are doing an amazing job of, you know, you're trying to think about everything through inputs by us, CBOs, CCOs, county, state. I can only imagine what kind of deep review you have after each call. And so I feel like we're not going to get it right the first time, but it's also really scary to think how much we're going to get it wrong. Um, if there isn't testing, if that makes sense. So like, that's why I said fake data, fake information, just to see how will it all play out. However, tools, um, O H A decided to use, whichever tool they decide to use, um, the reach, the extent of who's going to get impacted. Does that make sense?
It does. Um, and and Mary, I don't know if you want to talk about for M M I S, the, the plan for, for how that would be tested, but I think you highlight an important point about getting it right the first time. I can say that we are probably not going to get it perfect the first time. It is, uh, a new service. It's a new benefit, but what we're, what we're aiming to do to, to get it as close to right as we can, um, go live is, is meeting with you all, meeting with other partners, um, sharing designs coming, you know, getting feedback, coming back to the table and reworking it, uh, trying to think of different risks and barriers. And so, um, I can say we, we value all these partnerships and collaborations so much just because of that purpose, uh, to hear, you know, where, where are we not thinking of things? Where are the gaps that we need to go back and consider? So, um, I think it's a great idea. I'll go back to the, the team and we'll talk a little bit more about how we can, um, incorporate this idea into implementation, um, in, in specific to the climate rollout. I think luckily for climate, we do have a lot of lessons learned with the state program providing, uh, climate devices in the past, as well as working with, um, local distribution partners on that. So, um, that's always a positive, but yes, happy to take this back. And I guess, Mary, I called you out to see if you have anything to say specifically about like system testing that would be relevant here.
Yes. We do have a very elaborate technical testing plan for our systems internally. We don't have the ability to use fake data, which is why it's a bit of a struggle to share that externally. Because it will be utilizing true members, just applying them with different criteria than might be normal. So we load our full membership into our test system and do some pretty elaborate testing. So we definitely have that internal test plan. I think Jessie's going to talk with her team and, and the technical staff to see if we have any opportunity to do any external, uh, but just as a, as a bit of comfort, hopefully for the technology piece, not climate, of course, but after we get into the other services, once the system is ready, we will have done, um, approximately two months worth of pretty detailed testing by that point. But we can definitely talk more about what might be available to pull in partners for any of that.
Thank you all so much. And I do think this is a complicated enough body of work that it will not be a short piece of building and testing and rebuilding. It's like, we have five years to continue to make this better and to to really make the argument for what's going to work potentially longer term. So I don't expect these conversations to stop just because if, if anything, there's going to be a whole new group of things we want to open up the floor for once things start to become live. Um, and I think you all are asking exactly the right questions. We're going to need to keep asking as we start to see how rollout is and isn't working and, and who is being served and who might be being left behind that we need to rebuild and right away to, to consider. That's me being perhaps on a soapbox. Ashley.
Thank you, Jessica. So just a few things I do want to flag about the CCO really having a lot of, um, a lot of the decision-making in some of these pieces, for instance, who will a lot of the decision making in some of these pieces, for instance, who will be who will be HRSN service providers, like that will be up to the CCO. And pieces like that, so this is kind of a question also. Jessie, will the processes and systems vary between CCO to CCO?
So let me clarify real quick. So that would be, so we are going to establish provider qualification requirements. That will be in the CCO contract, but we will also have that for the third party contractor as well. So there'll be two, there's a fee for service program, there's CCO. So members will be able, will be eligible for HRSN services, whether they're open card or CCO. So it won't just be solely up to the CCO for their networks, yes. Relying on the, the requirements we put in place. So just wanted to add that clarity. Okay. And then what was your question, Ashley? Sorry, I was a little hung up on.
So would the work potentially look different from one CBO, or excuse me, from one CCO to the next? I know that there's overall guidance for the work, but will, will there be differences in the processes?
I mean, I think each CCO is different and they have their own workflows and they have their own tools that they've adopted. So I think yes, it will look different, but in terms of overarching requirements, those should be the same, but how the CCO will implement and whatever tools they use could be different.
I'm realizing. I have a slide that has some part of this that was right after our deep dive, but probably should have come before. And so I wanted to pull it up because I think it might also help us think through some of the things that are, that we know are standardized. I actually don't know, Jessie, do you want to talk about this or do you want me to? There's no answer.
Talk about it. Yoni has his hand up though. So do we want to go to Yoni first?
Oh, sure thing. So sorry, Yanni.
Hey there. Thanks for taking my comment. I mean, to the point about regions with multiple CCOs. There are also regions where no matter how many CCOs are, you're probably depending on the same network of HRSN service providers and it gets complicated for small CBOs like ourselves when we need to contract with two or three separate entities in order to ensure that anyone who walks in our door has the ability to kind of be brought into the fold of HRSN. And that's where I think there is worthy conversation around the role of a network administrator that is, you know, present regionally to hold all the contracts to ensure that no matter what CCO or fee for service you're enrolled in, it's not a barrier to you getting help if you're eligible.
Thanks, Yanni.
Yeah, it's a really important point.
Okay. So Jessica, should I walk through this now?
Yes, please.
Just trying to look in the chat. So for outreach and engagement, our, our envisioned process would look like this. So starting at the top, providers, HRSN providers, who will provide the outreach and engagement services, the, the five or so that Jessica had previously listed in a slide. We envision that they would identify and engage people for the health-related social needs and other services. From there, they would assess and document that individual's eligibility and their service needs on the appropriate form and transmit to the CCO and fee for service TPC. We are not requiring a standardized form for this. So if there's a specific tool that is in use by that provider, we are proposing that that is accepted by, that will be accepted by the CCO or the fee for service third party contractor. If there's anything missing that would prevent the authorization, there might, there may be some back and forth there, but there's not going to be like a required standardized form. There will be standardized content that's required to authorize the service, but not one tool that's broadly used. And so from there, kind of already previewed this, but the CCO then, and the fee for service third party contractor has that role in authorizing or denying that health-related social needs services. And then referring the, the individuals to referring the people to authorize services and notifying the outreach and engagement providers. And then back to the outreach and engagement providers or HRSN providers, they would be supporting the people, the members in accessing whatever services they were authorized for, whether it was climate, nutrition, housing. I'm kind of watching the chat. Okay. And so then from there, as I'd already mentioned, the invoicing process, it would be a manual process, at least for climate. So for the first six months of the waiver implementation, it would be a manual process that I already spoke to. Jessica, anything to add?
I, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it as a question instead of a statement. We have here a separation between the outreach engagement providers and the climate housing nutrition providers. Do those have to be different entities?
They don't. They, they could be the same. You do not have to be. What needs to be different is the authorization from the, the delivery of the services.
And then we're not using the phrase community-based organization because that is one group of folks we see as being potential providers. I know that language is so hard. And one of the reasons we've called this, this work session, Health Related Social Needs Partner Work Session, is that we are trying to find the right size and right language for folks who are going to be involved. When you see the word provider here, I think what we mean, and you can correct me, Jessie, if I'm wrong, is folks who are then able to bill for these services. That's a distinction between a partner, I mean, sorry, a provider in this context versus a community-based organization in general. So we absolutely mean for this orange and blue part of this infographic to be inclusive of community-based organizations.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jessica.
And we'll continue to work on our language as we also continue to work on building these structures. And I've been absolutely popping all over this slide deck based on what's coming up, but I did also want to, let's see, sorry, pardon me as I dig around in my slide deck one more time. I know this came up quite a bit when we were talking about the screening form, which we did in our last session, but I wanted to give people another chance to talk about the opportunities and concerns around collecting information so that people can be assessed for their health-related social needs, service needs. That was, that's a sentence. I wanted to make sure we open up the conversation here as well, because I know that's something that a lot of people had a lot to say about last time. And I don't want to close the door on that conversation. So that's one of the things we've made as part of our deep dive. Tabitha.
I mean, one thing I would say is if there's any way to make this a part of front end data collection and interview. I originally worked as an HIV case manager years and years ago. And one of the things that I always really focused on was trying to only ask challenging questions to someone once as much as possible to not have to keep re-asking questions of like, are you HIV positive? Do you have an AIDS diagnosis? Just because that could be really activating for folks. So similarly, because we ask some questions around, like, I would assume experience with things like DV or disability. I'm wondering if this is something that could be embedded in OHP applications so that you're already gathering that information right at the forefront or recertification, rather than it's some, be something that you have to gather at a different time. Some more so just an idea.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I think I would not want that to be the only way people could get their information to CCOs or to OHA or to a third party contractor.
But like, at least like an option at the forefront to, to act kind of as a predictor. And then of course, always with the, the more human relational element.
Yeah, I have, hmm, this might be something we talk about and bring back, but I don't know if there's anything about proactive outreach within a CCO around identifying potential folks who fit these populations without them having to volunteer into the system.
So just because this goes way back, if you look, there's probably a million case studies of case intensive care coordination. When the Affordable Care Act first implemented, there were active pushes where there were actually established networks where some of this lead entity language comes from, where people who met certain criteria of high utilization were automatically assigned to intensive care coordination. And those would be pushed out to assigned care coordination entities. And so if you look at some of those case studies, like sometimes those predictive pushes can reach the people who have the highest need, who wouldn't necessarily reach out for the help. And folks who are CBOs can opt in either as only taking active cases for referral, or sometimes you have organizations that want those like kind of caseloads loaded in that then they have to go out and do outreach for. So that's where a lot of this is coming from, from work I did up in Washington.
And Jessie, do you have a response?
So a couple of things, you had mentioned proactive identification. So that is something that we are expecting that, especially with, with the climate devices, because we would want that individuals who qualify have certain conditions that would be ameliorated or that, you know, preventing exacerbation of those conditions if there's a climate emergency, heat, fire, whatever the case, we want those folks for the most part, as much as possible, identified in advance so that they can receive the devices before an emergency happens. Because there's two ways for individuals to qualify for climate devices if they're part of the transition populations. And they have, they meet clinical and risk, clinical and social risk criteria. And that clinical criteria also is appropriate for the climate device. That population does not require an emergency event to receive the climate device. There's a second way to qualify and that's for individuals who reside in an area experiencing extreme weather as declared an emergency by the federal government or the governor of Oregon. That is a much more difficult population to serve in terms of getting them devices quickly. And so just to go back to your, your question about proactive identification, we are looking to have, to have individuals identified in advance as much as possible for that benefit. And then in terms of screening, I can't remember who mentioned this, but here, here the importance about not having individuals re-screened over and over. And so in terms of screening requirements, we would, we're proposing that CCOs and the third party contractor would accept or use existing information that they already have on the member. And so they're not asking the same questions over. They already have that information to authorize the service, then they don't need to re-ask the member those sensitive questions. Does that help?
Thank you, Jessie. And I think one thing that I want to stress is when it comes to using different, different ways of collecting information, the idea is that this would err on the side of inclusivity. So many inclusion directions and pathways. And, and not really looking to make exclusion pathways unless we, there are places we really have to. So if there is information that comes from a CCO, from the OHP application, things like that, they would only be used for inclusionary purposes and not to screen people out, giving people the opportunity to share additional information that could include them in HRSN services wherever possible. I don't know if my sentences are making sense, but I think that's something we talked a lot about last time around. We were looking at the screening form is where are we really focusing on, you know, where we need the bare minimum of information to be able to take action versus the other way around. And then Tabitha, did we, did we do your question justice?
Oh yeah, I, I just have lots of ideas, but I have no strong opinions.
Thank you. Janine, I think you're up next.
Yeah. So with Valley Family being a federally qualified health center, there are some like federal guidelines that we follow. So we, and with our primary care, I don't know what it stands for. It's PCPCH. So we have to screen each patient that comes in and sees us at least once a year. So right now, we are working on a rollout program to do a prepare, which is a social determines of health screener to be able to identify those patients that are in need and have barriers. But then also making sure that we're asking if anything has changed from their last appointment. So if we have patients that come in and they see us every three months, and let's say we completed a prepare, but then they lost their job. The next appointment, we need to make sure that we're addressing that barrier and trying to get, to get them connected. And then we're also working on getting these screeners sent out on our electronic health record. So we just transferred to Epic a little over a year ago. So we're trying to utilize it to the best of our knowledge, the best of its ability, I guess. And so we're trying to see what's going to be the best way to get those sent out to our patients to make sure that we are addressing their social barriers. And then back to Tabitha's idea, I know that right now, when you complete a application through the one system, there's a question in there for individuals who have kiddos that are under five, if they want to get connected to WIC. So I feel like maybe there could be a connection with that as well that says, you know, do you have any barriers to X, Y, and Z? Would you like to be connected to a community partner? So that also would be a good way. And then again, with Tabitha's idea is, you know, making sure that we're only screening them once. You know, working in healthcare, it seems like every healthcare system you go to, there's a screener at every single location. And so if we can standardize it and have really good care collaboration, then we should be able to communicate that back and forth. So I don't know if that's, you know, really getting community partners, getting to where we are contract workers with each other, or getting the correct ROI so that we can exchange that information. But yeah, I've had patients who I'm screening them and then I refer them to, let's say, you know, another location for mental health and they're getting screened and then they go somewhere else and they're getting screened again. And then by the end of it, they are just like, nope, I'm not answering your questions anymore. So then they don't want to even seek services. So I really think that overall, if we can just get better care collaborations within agencies and maybe, you know, get those questions on the one application, even if it's just, like I said, three little questions. They're already asking, they're already answering a million of them. So you might as well just throw in one more and get those social barriers addressed as well.
Thank you. Jessie, is your hand newly up?
It's not. That was residual, but I do want to, while I'm here, emphasize or just share with this group that we recently held a rules advisory committee. And we shared rules that will be updating related to HRSN services, specifically the climate rules and outreach engagement going live in January. So that will be open for public, those rules will be open for public comment until November 21st. So Jessica, I think we want to share the link to how folks can review and, and provide feedback on those rules. That would be likely very helpful in case folks weren't at that rack.
That's a great idea.
Follow up with that information.
Absolutely. I was like, where do I write this down? So I absolutely don't forget that, that we are. Absolutely. I was like, where do I write this down? So I absolutely don't forget that, that we are, there was a rule, the rule advisory work, public comment open. Absolutely want to make sure that you all have access to that. And I'm sure you have really important thoughts if you have time and capacity to share them. And this is specific to climate work. I
Jessica, could I ask you about that, the rules advisory committee? So I did get invited to that. I didn't realize it was for the climate. Will there be a rules advisory committee for nutrition?
There will be so many more rulemaking opportunities.
Yeah, I'll answer that. We'll do one for housing and nutrition as well.
What about for the fourth one? Is it community outreach?
Support? Outreach and engagement. So yeah, there, there were a limited subset of activities that were included in the recent rack that we're proposing to go live with climate in January. So that was included. And the, the rest of the activities that are, that are more appropriate for like housing and nutrition will go in those rule advisory committees.
Thank you.
So they're threaded throughout the other rules?
Correct.
I think that's one of the reasons I wanted to make sure we did talk a little about outreach and engagement, because I think it's a really cool part of what we're we're able to do that goes beyond, and really, I think I use this metaphor at the beginning, is the glue for making some of these other, these other services and supports accessible and possible. And gives us a little more new ways in order to fund how these services are able to, to work in community, or at least that's what I hope we're here to do. I have been bouncing around the slide deck, but
Jessica, I just want to say I admire your ability to bounce around the slide deck. I can't see how many screens you have or browser windows, but just your ability to put on just the right slide as people like me are asking questions relevant to what you pop on the screen is just amazing. Thank you.
It's a skill and a curse, because you might be able to tell from this that I don't think linearly, that can be a problem sometimes, but I, I do, I enjoy finding small ways to be a little more responsive, and we'll continue to work on that, too. I think we have been talking about this, but I did want to make sure I also put up on the screen the idea of putting information into CCO and fee-for-service, or we've been calling it that TPC, the third-party contractor, who will be working on behalf of the Open Card or Fee-for-Service State Program. If there are any other things folks wanted to talk more about around sending partially or fully completed screening forms. And I think we, I feel like I, I owe you all a new iteration of the screening form, but I'm not sure what, what's its current status is. Based on last session and the conversations we've been having today, is there anything else that folks want to talk about when it comes to getting information to the CCOs, getting information to the folks who ultimately are the ones who must make that eligibility determination when it comes to health-related social needs services? You all can let me know if we already talked about this, or if you want to talk more. Oh, go ahead, Janine.
Yeah, I missed the last meeting because I was gone, but I do know that, you know, there is a barrier right now, and I know that we're not, you know, we're not really working on the HRSNs. But I know that there's a big barrier right now, especially with the flexible service, that it's taking a long time to get answers back. And so people are possibly getting their power turned off, or they're getting, you know, eviction notices or something like that. And so I feel like it would be best to have like certain individuals that we reach out for certain things. So if we're wanting climate help, we should have a contact to reach out to the, for that. If we're wanting, you know, rental assistance, there should be a contact for that, you know, or a couple of contacts. I'm not saying, you know, one person per CCO, that's going to be almost impossible to handle. But I feel like instead of just giving us a generic, oh, this is who you're going to call, you know, no, let's, let's get more specific on who we need to reach out to, because once we submit our forms, you know, they don't know how important it is, or maybe we need to be able to assign it as urgent or something like that to get responses back sooner than, you know, a few weeks. But I feel like if we're able to identify an individual or be able to, like I said, say that it's an urgent need that needs to be addressed, I think that that will help the individuals asking for the members a little bit more comfortable to be able to be like, well, it's not going to take six months for this to get approved.
Thank you, Janine. And I, I cannot remember if you were the one who put this in the chat, or if other folks did. I think it's come up a few times about where can we be transparent about how these various requests or needs are being documented? How can we make sure we are closing that loop so that everyone involved along the way has the right information? And I definitely don't have answers for that. And I know there will be some aspects of this, as Jessie was talking about, things that we will have to build while we are also going live, especially when we're talking about those, those parts of the work that are farther down the line, like the community information exchanges that have come up a few times in this conversation. But I just want to, I think I'm just reflecting what you're saying back, or what I think you're saying back. But how can we make sure that there are not only the, the systems in place, but the humans in place? Because ultimately, every human is a unique human, and we're going to need those human connections, and we're going to need to know who, who needs to be a part of this.
Yeah, yeah. Because sometimes when we call, like in the beginning, yeah, now we know, you know, that it's Jane Doe that covers, you know, rental assistance, or John Smith that does this. But it took us a long time to figure those things out. And before we were calling and they're like, well, we don't know who you need to talk to. Let me get you connected. And then you get transferred four or five times to the right person. And so, you know, it's their time, our time, patients' time. You know, and so it just makes the process a little bit longer and kind of makes it to where is this benefit even worth the time to utilize the benefit? And then we, you know, like during the summer months, some of our flex services requests, we were getting calls back the same day, hey, you need an air conditioner? We've got you covered. We're going to get that ordered. It's going to be in the mail. But then for an individual who's, you know, has an eviction notice and has two kids or three kids in the home, it takes four or five months to get approved. It's like, you know, what, what, what trumps? You know, what, what's going to be a fast approval and what's going to be a little bit longer? So then we can kind of, you know, gauge and see if there's other additional resources that we can possibly use. In the meantime, not saying that we're not exhausting all of our community resources before we go to, you know, like the flex service aspect of it. But, you know, even if it's just, you know, calling the landlord and being like, hey, we're in the process of this, it can take a couple of months. What, what do you need from us to be able to, you know, to, so that the individual doesn't get evicted, you know, maybe the CCO can write a letter saying, hey, it's under evaluation, something so that we're just not sitting here kind of in a loophole, just kind of waiting for a response.
Absolutely. And how do we, how are we framing all of this so that we are not reflecting or deepening the inequities that are already at play in our systems and in our society? I'm actually realizing a small part of this is in our five out of five deep dive, which is that there are aspects of the outreach and engagement services that are inclusive of things that are not within HRSN. And so while we may not be able to use Medicaid funds on everything that someone may need, the act of connecting people is something that we can start to be more inclusive of. I'm seeing a lot of great stuff in the chat. I'm trying to get away from just parroting everything that's in the chat, because I'm realizing we have that in the chat, and we're using it. But I also want to give people a chance to say things out loud themselves, and you all have been really great for that. Janine?
We might as well just talk. No, I'm just kidding. Um, yeah, so these are, you know, this is going to be essential, I have to say, for our individuals, you know, our populations. Because we've got, you know, people that can't afford to go to school, but maybe they just want to go and get their nine-month MA program, or they want to go and get, you know, a quick certification, but they don't have the means to be able to do that. But it's going to make their quality of life better after that nine months. And so, because for our community of Mather County and the counties that we serve, we have a lot of extra programs like this that we can utilize for our patients. And so, you know, we do hit those brick walls where they just don't meet the criteria. And so it would be really nice to be able to have another avenue to travel. Instead of telling the individual, nope, there's nothing that we can do, we can't help you. And, you know, there's a lot of, of our patients that they need certain things that maybe they don't want professionals to be able to address. Maybe they just do want to peer, you know, meet with a peer or something like that. And so to be able to get them connected to other services as well. These, I have to say, these, not saying that the other ones aren't important, but these are the ones that drive it. These are the ones that are going to make the quality of life better for the individuals that we serve, because they're going to be able to reach some of their goals that necessarily they weren't able to do prior to having access to these services.
Thank you, Janine. When you said these, do you mean this particular outreach and engagement support? I just want to make sure for note, note-taking purposes.
No, you're good. These ones, like the peer, the social, the educational, legal, other services, like these that are listed on this screen right here are not more important than the other services, but these are the ones that are going to change, you know, change people's lives. Because if we can get somebody help with education, that's going to change our life for the good. And there's not a lot of services or benefits for individuals to be able to continue education without getting thousands and thousands of dollars in debt, and they can't afford that. Especially if they're living on a limited income or a working family. So I feel like any assistance that could possibly help, even if it's just, you know, like my employer, they pay $2,500 a year for me to go to school, you know, stuff like that. These are things that some employers don't offer, but maybe it's a program that's going to be offered through these, this program, and it's going to benefit a lot of people.
Thank you. Yoni?
Hey there. I would just say, as far as the deep dive for the five of five, you know, in, in Multnomah County, our agency is dealing with acuity that has just skyrocketed over the last several years in the pandemic, which means that you know, even the folks we've housed have ongoing issues. They're stably housed, they have a rental payment, they are having ongoing issues staying stably housed. And so having this connection to be able to kind of integrate and on-ramp onto OHP and working together so that the, when necessary, the case manager can kind of do a warm handoff or highlight either an urgent or non-urgent issue is really pivotal for us and the clientele we're serving.
Thank you. Goodness, it's already 2:50. I don't know how these two hours always disappear faster in this meeting than any other meeting I'm at, probably because I enjoy talking to you all. Sherilyn, and then I do want to make sure I go through just like a slide so that we talk about next steps.
Okay, thanks. What Yoni said, also echoing what Janine said, you know, the reason we, even though we're such a small grassroots CBO, have now taken steps and made time and investment into looking at community outreach, how can we do more for the folks who have come to us and have self-identified and let us know what their other needs are, which is basically everything that you're showing here on your slide, is because we've, we've gotten their trust, we've built rapport. We're not, we don't have the capacity to offer more than what we're doing now. But we've started by just emailing certain folks after we read their comments, and they share about their struggles with, you know, about to lose their home or their medical needs, or how the system is, you know, consistently failing them. And, and so I just want to say that even us as a small organization, because we, we, we care deeply about not just a, here's, here's a meal, we're going to pass out, you know, and then buy. No, we're actually looking at solving the problems, the social injustices and the inequities at the root. And we recognize that that will take a lot of us, if not all of us, and that it will take a long time. And so I really hope that the team thinks about that as well. I know, I know they are. It's just echoing what, what Yoni said, you know, the acuteness of the problem, especially with the last three years during the pandemic. You know, I feel like that really set a lot of these folks back so much that I don't even know that starting over is the baseline anymore. I feel like we're at a deficit, and that's really scary, right?
Thank you. I do also want to say, trying to think of how to say this, I want to acknowledge the fact that, A, I think the outreach and engagement services might kind of be one of the, like, the sleeper piece of the waiver that maybe have some really cool things that are possible. But I also know that there will be a lot of the pieces of working within Medicaid that are going to complicate this. So I think I would really like us to consider this, yet another one of those sort of teaser conversations that is not over, but that we continue to have as we, as we look into what's possible, what are the limitations? And how do we continue to build towards a collaborative and ultimately person-centered model for doing this work? It won't be easy, but I am excited about it. And before I forget to do the important end of meeting pieces of this, I do want to say that I will send out, we have a new registration link for November 7th. So I know for folks who have been participating in these last four sessions, they all had one registration. This one will be a new one, and I will make sure it is part of our follow-up activities that we're sending to you all. So you will have to register a new, which has not necessarily been true of the last few. We have on our official plan to talk about community capacity building funding, and I do think that's an important part of this. I do know there's also been a lot of talk about really digging more into how the like reimbursement or invoicing or other aspects of payment for rendering of services versus this startup work is going to, is going to, how it's going to work and how it's going to evolve over time, because we will have to put things into play at the beginning that will continue to change as we build out more of our systems and our capacity as well. I have not yet sent the link to anyone, so no one signed up for November 7th, so you're not behind if you haven't. I just made it yesterday. So it's a brand-new link that I'll be sending out. And in fact, if you all have patience with me at the end, I think I can quickly navigate to it and put it in the chat, too, so you have it right away. But just know that as we continue to build out, we're going to continue to hold sessions. I have this big, open question about how we should best navigate the fact that there's Thanksgiving and holidays coming up, where it's going to be hard to get a lot of folks together, because there's so many competing things, not only with work, but with personal lives to be considering. So please know that we are also planning on continuing these. We are aiming for twice a month. We might have to get a little creative towards the end of November and the end of December, but expect to see more, more details on that coming soon as well. And that if there are things you want to make sure we are focused on, it might not be in the next session, it might take some time to wrangle the right experts and the right content, but that we are committed to being responsive where we can be, really using the frame of how we can build a shared understanding of what it means to partner within the health-related social needs part of the work and what it looks like to become a provider. So I think there's a lot more details about how to become and, and work as a provider of these services that we need to cover and that I'm excited to be bringing you. And it might get a little complicated from a scheduling perspective in the very near future. Whew, okay, that's the main thing I wanted to talk about. Please Whoo, okay, that's the main thing I wanted to talk about. Please put a save the date for November 7th. I'm not good at multitasking, or I would have already been grabbing the link while I talked. We continue to have information on our website. We do have a, we have our monthly webinar, which is, this is specifically here, a place to talk sort of more conversation around being a provider and a partner. But there is the All-Come webinar, the next one is November 1st. And that'll be in English with November 15th, I want to say. I'm bad at math, two weeks later in Spanish. And that I really, really appreciate your partnership here and also your patience as I bounce around a slide deck and try to keep us organized and open space for conversation at the same time. So thank you all. I do also want to say that there were some folks who talked a lot and some folks who talked not at all. And if you're in one of the, those not at all parts of the audience, I hope you are finding this useful. And I also really welcome you to connect with us offline if there are ways that we can continue to engage you better or things that you might want to talk to us about that aren't in this setting. So I will be sharing the November 1 and November 7th information in a follow-up email. I've decided to give up on trying to multitask, because we're already at 2:57. And I don't want folks to, to feel like they're rushed or that I am not moving fast enough. So I'll, I'll do that as a follow-up activity. Thank you all. Thank you, subject matter experts who agreed to be put on the spot. Thank you so much, Ashley, for stepping in and helping us move the conversation forward and for doing the recording. And thank you all for being here today, and we'll see you in early November. I think we can stop recording.
I'm still recording until the till the meeting ends. I'm sorry, I have to, because I'm on two devices.
Ah, no worries. I think we're ready to close this out, so I'll go ahead and end the meeting. Thank you all.